Good afternoon, everyone. It's Monday, July 21st, 2025. We are here this afternoon for a work session with community planning, infrastructure, and resources. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. With me are my fellow Commissioners, Commissioner Jody Shattuck McNally and Commissioner John Kofalis. We have our county manager with us, Loretta Volker. I will turn things over to our Community Planning Infrastructure Resources Director, Leslie Ellis, and she'll let us know what's on today's schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon. You're lucky to have Connor with you back again after this morning's work session, and Portia Cook is here as well. The topic for today is to give you an update on all the exciting activities coming up at the fair and rodeo in a couple of weeks. So I think with no further ado, I'll just go ahead and pass it over to the two of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you to everyone joining us, both in person and online. Again, my name is Portia Cook. I lead Strategic Communications for the Ranch Events Complex. I am joined by Ranch Managing Director Connor McGrath, who will also be able to help answer any questions that any of you may have at the end of the presentation. Yes, I am excited to share a preview of what is ahead for the 2025 Laramie County Fair and PRCA Rodeo. I think before we get started, more than anything, this is a preview of what's taking place, but it's also a moment for us to reflect on the legacy, pride, and progress that continue to shape this beloved event and the campus it calls home. The fair is just around the corner. It does kick off Friday, August 1st, and it does run through Tuesday, August 5th. We will be taking a look through some of the exciting new additions to 2025 Fair, share some of the highlights that the Ranch Master Plan has going on and that directly affect our fairgrounds, and reflect on the community connection that keeps this beloved event thriving. So as a reminder of how long the fair has been making an impact... Do you want to go back to that slide? Perfect. The Laramie County Fair began in 1878 in what is now Laramie Avenue in Fort Collins. It later moved to a racetrack site in Loveland, Colorado in 1912, where it remained there for over 90 years, or about 90 years. Now, in 2003, the fairground became its new home at the ranch. That was thanks to voter support and a shared vision for the future. Now, each of these moves today, it really tells a story of growth and resilience in a community that really continues to invest in those traditions. And that legacy and the strong investment in community and tradition continues to show up at the ranch, specifically through the fair. This year, we are seeing a record-setting community engagement and a stronger participation than ever. This year, we do anticipate over 600 youth exhibitors, more than 1,500 open class entries, and another breaking record, excuse me, breaking year for livestock and quilt submissions. So again, these numbers really aren't just statistics. They're real stories of dedication from our 4-H families, hobbyists, and overall community members who continue to bring the fair to life each year. Now, at the heart of the fair, we all know the PRCA rodeo. I think we can all agree that this is a true Western tradition and one of the region's most recognized events. We are, as far as the ranch goes, proudly hosting the rodeo since the fair moved to the campus in 2003, continuing for over two decades. It brings in top athletes, large crowds, and really supports programming, not only for veterans, but also for our 4-H youth families and community members. And one of the beautiful things about this rodeo is not only is it celebrating our equestrian roots, but also highlighting the ranch as a premier destination and competitive venue. It's tradition. It's a tradition that we look forward to hosting every single year and one that we look forward to hosting yet again this year. Speaking of this year's fair, we are bringing in a wide range of new entertainment and experiences for community members. We are starting with the Indigenous Opening Ceremony that kicks off the fair on... You can go to the next one. Friday, August 1st at 5:30 PM. That is an event that honors the original stewards of this land and celebrates Indigenous culture through music, dance, and storytelling. New this year, we also have Lil Coop, a 15-year-old local DJ who has overcome significant medical challenges in his life. He will take the stage on Sunday for an upbeat All Ages Set, showing up to do what he loves the most while inspiring others along the way, so we're really excited for him. He was also a DJ, has been a DJ a couple of times for the Eagles as well, so we're excited to have him on campus. We will also feature the Shockwave Trick Riders. These are performing horseback stunts, like the Roman Riding on Friday night. Saturday will bring us the Jim's Wings Wing Eating Contest, where contestants will compete to devour 50 wings the fastest. And then we also have another day that I'm really excited about, the Sensory Day, which will be held on Monday, offering a low-sensory, accessible environment with local partners so that more community members are able to come out and enjoy the fair. For some of those ongoing experiences that are new this year, families can explore the House of Butterflies. That will be an event featuring 15-plus live species surrounded by vibrant flora. And then join the new AgVenture scavenger hunt to learn about Colorado's beautiful agriculture in a fun and hands-on way. One of the things that we are very excited to share is we are at full capacity for vendors this year, with all 67 booths sold out, both indoors and outdoors, which is great. OVG Hospitality is also rolling out some really fun, new, exciting, and bold offerings, like the Mini Churro Chicken Skewer. That is a maple-glazed boneless chicken and churro on a stick, so look forward to that. There's also going to be the Jumbo Pizza Dog that is new, and a 21-plus drink called the Cotton Candy Crush, which many of us are very excited about. We are also welcoming new food vendors this year, including the Blue Trolley Bistro, Sunny Stacks Pancakes, and Burger Buggies. And then all attendees are invited to join us at the Mountain Dew Tent, which is also new this year. They are going to be featuring a ton of free samples, limited-time flavors, slushies, games, and different prizes. So we know that food is a huge part of the fair, so we're excited to shake things up a little bit, get a little bit creative, more fun, and definitely more immersive when it comes to food and drink. Now, as we look beyond the fair to the layout of the grounds, you will see some infrastructure improvements that have quietly yet significantly transformed how our guests are going to be experiencing the fair and the ranch property in general. As a part of our Ranch Master Plan improvements, ADA accessible parking has been relocated from Lot F, that's F as in Frank, to new accessible spaces in Lot B as in Boy, C as in Charlie. This now completed upgrade improves guest safety, really reducing that foot-in-vehicle traffic in one of the fair's busiest areas, so we're really looking forward to this project being completed. This new configuration also supports a smoother guest drop-off and also includes a dedicated ride-share lane, which is great. In total, 69 ADA spaces were added to Lot C and 20 more in Lot B, including two EV-compatible ADA spots. These lots, the new lots, will continue to feature the clearly-marked crosswalks, flat paved walkways, and accessible signage throughout. As you may recall, the relocation of the ADA parking is a project that is part of the broader Parking and County Road 5 Initiative project, and it sets the foundation for what's to come next. And that brings me back to Lot F. Now vacated, that will become the new home of our 130,000-square-foot Event Plaza, once complete. That Event Plaza is going to host everything from food trucks to live entertainment, weekly pop-ups, and so much more. The opportunities are endless there, really creating that central gathering place for the ranch. Currently in progress, as a part of the same larger effort that included the ADA upgrades, is the Lot E expansion. That is going to add 450 new parking spaces and the County Road 5 widening from one lane to two lanes with a dedicated turn and acceleration lane. Construction will continue throughout the fair, but there will be little to no disruption for guests during that time. Again, these improvements are key to accommodating for future growth as we continue to grow and keeping the ranch as accessible as possible year-round. Now, as we continue to make these improvements and continue building for the future, this year's fair, I think we all know, holds a very special meaning for all of us. It does, excuse me, mark the last time that we will all gather on the current layout. For over 20 years, these grounds have been a space of shared memories, community milestones, and local pride. And this will be a year of transition into even more memories that are going to be made. Work will begin this fall on the new event lawn, which will become the future home of the Laramie County Fair. This transition, again, will give us more flexibility, that greater capacity, and a stronger foundation for hosting the kinds of events and experiences that our growing community both needs and deserves. With that said, we do invite our entire community out to celebrate the transition with us and experience the fair on these grounds one last time before it transitions to its new event space. I think, you know, when talking through the fair, it's incredibly important to note that we're not leaving the past behind, and this is not just a stopping point in the fair becoming the past for us. More than anything, it's building on the future to create something even more impactful than we already have. And that is where Phase 2 of the Master Plan comes in. As we recall, Phase 2 of the Master Plan includes a new event lawn and amphitheater, again, that will become that event lawn, becoming the home, the new home of the Laramie County Fair, a redeveloped youth sports and ice complex with three new sheets of ice, major Blue Arena enhancements, that redesigned Events Plaza, which again will be the home that is the now vacant Lot F that will become the home of the new Event Plaza with work beginning in fall of 2026, upgraded signage throughout the complex, and eventually the future convention and hotel center. These additions will not only strengthen the ranch's role as a year-round destination for both local and national events, but really, these additions will allow us to continue to be rooted in the traditions that make Laramie County so special. With that said, this year's 2025 Laramie County Fair again runs August 1st through August 5th. Grounds do open at 4:00 PM on weekdays and 10:00 AM on Saturdays and Sundays, with the carnival open until midnight every single night. This year's PRCA rodeo is running Sunday, August 3rd through Tuesday, August 5th, starting at 7:00 PM in Blue Arena. All full event details can be found on the ranch's website online. So whether it's your first year attending or your 20th year attending, this is definitely a special moment for all of us and one that we don't want anyone to miss. With that being said, I thank you all for your time and your continued support and your commitment to the ranch and the Laramie County Fair, and we look forward to seeing everyone at this upcoming celebration.
Thank you, Portia. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
Thank you, I'm sure. Thank you, Portia, for a great presentation. Did we get these slides? Yeah, we have the slides.
We can provide the slides to you, Commissioner.
Great. I'm presenting in front of the Town of Bertha tomorrow, and I'd love to show the history one and then invite them, make sure that the, invite them to the fair and the town board and make sure they know how important it is, and that would be great if I could get that. I appreciate that very much. As the red wheel lays on, which is coming up real quick, as I understand, and I forgot the name of the act, I know... the name of the act, I know our chairperson, Rick, has been talking about this performer coming for the rodeo this year. He's considered the best in the business. We had to book him two years ago, I think, to come and be the main act for the rodeo and between all the other events. Are we advertising about the gentleman, or is it just kind of built into the stuff for the rodeo? I'm just curious about, and I'm trying to think of his name, I'm trying to look it up quick, but...
I think it might be Bobby that you're referring to, Commissioner.
Yeah, supposedly he's supposed to be, I know it's someone they really went and recruited, and he'd been really excited to have him and boasted about him coming, and I said, "Is that next year?" He'll, "No, he's this year," and I went, "Oh, I forgot." So I'm curious about that.
And if it is Bobby, he'll be with us for the next three years as our barrelman. I know we are, we have a comprehensive marketing package out from our marketing department. I was actually just commenting to Portia before this meeting that we were all over some websites here in Fort Collins. I have not seen any information directly, but our program will drop on the 25th.
Is there a way, if you do get someone that we could get as commissioners, just a little bit of comment or a little blurb about him so we could post and make people excited to come and...
Absolutely.
...see that act? And then also, I like the idea that this is a transition year, come and enjoy this year before the, not before, but in anticipation of what this will look like so you can see the before and after. So I like that idea, and I will be probably using that. I've got my newsletter to get out, so I think I'll be highlighting that. So just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I thought there were some good points in that. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Kofalos, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, colleagues. Well done. I have two questions. The second one is perhaps a bit on the silly side, but the first one is, I think, a tiny bit more substantive, and that is, with regard to the description of some of the food-related activities and vendors and all that, what are we doing to accommodate folks who might prefer vegetarian corn dogs?
Thank you, Commissioner. We do encourage all of our vendors to have a mixed menu, not just vegetarian, but thinking gluten-free, thinking nut-free. We do have two vendors, they'll be on the sidewalk closest to the east side of Blue Arena, and they are, I do not recall which cuisine they are, but they are two vegetarian food trucks that also are accommodating other allergies.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. It seems like most food trucks, they do have a variety of options, including vegetarian. I just want to make sure we're not sliding folks because they're, I think we want to make sure that people understand they have options, and there are many who prefer to be vegetarian.
Yep.
Then my second question. So on August 2nd, I will be serving as the judge for the Dairy Goat Costume Competition, and I think it's just me, and I'm feeling a fair amount of anxiety about that. Do either of you have any advice? I'm planning to do all manner of research on the internet about criteria. I don't know if there's anything you can do to help with my anxiety.
Start by taking a couple deep breaths.
We can help you, I, Commissioner.
You can?
Definitely.
Sure. And I also wanted to go back to your initial question. I forgot. We are currently under construction in Blue Arena. If you've been to see us recently, you may have seen a à la carte, there's a new stand, it's called Fry Heaven. That's a new concession that we're adding to the east side of Blue Arena, and it's a custom, they're custom fries, so if you're, we can accommodate various different allergies around. And offline, we can help relieve your anxiety about...
I appreciate that, and I'm hoping we can have that conversation sooner than later.
Sure.
We have a lot of individuals who are well-versed, so we can give you a printout with some talking points if needed.
I have been a judge at the goat show, so I can also give you some tips, yes.
I would love that.
Yes, happy to do that. It's pretty fun, and it's pretty casual, so it's...
I've actually judged corgi, the corgi costume, but there were three of us. Enough said, let's move on.
Yes, sure. Well, thank you for the presentation. I had a little bit of a teaser on it because I wrote the article this month for, that will be going out this week to some of the major newspapers, and so was able to use some of your talking points. Not all of them because I had a word limit, but included a lot of that in the article I wrote as well, so appreciate that. Can you, so with the grounds changing, I mean, the fair will happen next year. Will all the renovations and changes be complete by that, by fair time?
They will. Thank you, Commissioner. We most likely will have to move some of the carnival rides. Our goal is to lay sod no later than the first week of June. Even that, it's still not going to be enough time to be setting large, heavy equipment on. So the dry grassland that's closest to the fence line on the east side of the property, that's not included in the master plan. It's included in Phase 2 for site improvements later on, but that would be in conjunction with the hotel convention space, not with this first phasing. So we have some flexibility on that dry grassland. That's the area where we typically use for the firework fallout zone, so it may mean some modifications to where we shoot off fireworks, but the show will go on next year on a much bigger footprint, been able to invite in a lot more vendors, and just slight modifications.
Thank you for explaining that. And then with the moving of the handicap parking spaces, will there be plenty of people to kind of ferry people from, I mean, it's a little bit further, maybe, not a ton further, honestly, like, you know, maybe a couple hundred feet in some cases, but will there be, what will that look like to get people, you know, that have some mobility challenges from the new handicap park to any of the buildings or into the fair?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. We've added some additional shuttle drivers this year. We've also added some larger shuttles, so we're hoping between adding the shuttles and there's some spaces where it's about 100 feet further from Blue, but most of the spaces are actually maximizing spaces closer to the First National Bank and Gate 2. And then we also are doing some work on the McKee facility to provide an ADA path, so when we take the event lawn offline, those user groups that use Peterson and McKee in order for them to have the square footage that they need, they typically walk on the interior bowl sidewalks. Those will be offline starting in October this year. So before the fair, there will also be a new ADA path that is poured at Gate 1 that cuts between the little apple trees between there and the McKee parking lot. So we're really doubling down and getting more ADA spots in place, and then the shuttle drivers will be there to accommodate people that need to be driven somewhere.
Perfect, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that people understood that they should still come out and we'll help them get where they need to go. And then just wanted to put a plug in for, thank you for talking about 4-H and the 600-plus exhibits that'll happen in the McKee Building. For those folks who don't make it to the McKee Building, just want to encourage people to go see the 4-H exhibits, both in the McKee Building and the animal exhibits in the show barns. These kids work really hard all year long to get their projects to fair, and it really is fun to see the work that they've done, and I know that 4-H is going to have a little activity center and as well extensions, so you can learn about how you or your kids can participate in 4-H, and the open-class exhibit hall is really great to see the quilts. I mean, are pieces of art, honestly, and so that's just a, that's a joy to kind of walk through that building as well. So encourage people to maybe go beyond just the carnival and the food stands and really kind of explore some of the buildings because I think they'll be delighted to see what's in those buildings. So thank you very much, and I plan to try the churro and chicken. That sounds awesome. I love it when there's new food options. I'm a big fan of corn doggies, but I will certainly, and corn doggies, I don't know if they're coming, but they usually have a vegetarian option, FYI. But yeah, it sounds awesome. I can't wait to go to the fair. It seems like every year it just gets better, and so we appreciate you being here to tell us all about it. Loretta, anything you want to say?
No, I think the food is enough. You had me at the food. But the kids exhibits, I mean, I think the work that you all do to really highlight their work all year long is remarkable, and the folks who take the time to submit their quilts and their artwork and their plants and those kind of things are, I don't, if you don't like carnival rides, there's plenty of other things to do at the fair that don't involve the carnival rides, and so I encourage everyone to go. It's a great tradition.
Thank you. And I am going to put a plug in for something that happens before the fair, which is the 4-H Public Fashion Review on the evening of July 23rd. As a former fashion show 4-H'er, I will say that it is really fun to see these kids participate in the fashion show, and they are quite skilled with their sewing skills and their decorating skills, and so that's a really fun thing to do before fair even starts. So join them on the 23rd, and I'm not sure what building that's in, but it's in the McKee Building, so join us on the 23rd for that one as well. All right. Thank you. Thanks for being here. So we will move on, and our next agenda item is Community Development Director update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. I have a bit of a longer list of updates today than I usually do since we have the time, and I want to start by talking about a couple of our upcoming land use hearings and giving you a heads up and asking for some guidance on one of the agendas. So next week, July 28th, you have both a 3:00 hearing and a 6:30 hearing. I want to warn you, those are both going to be pretty full hearings. The 3:00 hearing next week, we have three items on consent and three items currently on discussion, and then the 6:30 hearing, we have two items on discussion. There is the ability, if you need to push anything from the 3:00 to the 6:30 hearing, if things are running long, or if you need to table any items for a future hearing date, you always have that option as well. It's a mix of items that you will see next week. There's a land division and rezone, some code amendments, a short-term rental, an appeal, an easement vacation, and the transportation master plan, the Laramie on the Move Plan. And then in the evening, you'll have a conservation development and an appeal, so it's going to run the gamut next week. The following land use hearing, the next one will be August 11th. I believe Commissioner Stevens will be absent that day, and we currently have seven cases that are ready for hearing that day, four of which would be on consent, three of which would be on discussion. Our recommendation, since one of the commissioners will be absent, is to hold off on those items that are slated for discussion and push them to the next hearing that would be a couple weeks later, just to ensure a full conversation, or in case anything comes up with the two other commissioners, to make sure that we have a full conversation at the hearing, but wanted to check with you all because it would cause a delay, a two-week delay for those three applicants.
I mean, I'm not going to weigh in myself because I'm not going to be there, so whatever my colleagues want to do.
Have you had those conversations with the applicants, that there could be a potential delay, and how would that impact what they're trying to do?
Yeah, we are making the applicants aware that one of the commissioners would be absent, and we can follow up and let them know that it's going to get pushed if we decide to move in that direction, and yeah, we would contact each of them individually and have those conversations.
Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, my family.
I appreciate your thoughtfulness, and you know, I didn't know, it's always hard, you know, we sometimes get sick or something, but I guess I'm okay with what your recommendation is, but I really am sensitive to the applicants, if they've been waiting and they thought it was ill-ent, that I was going to get bumped back, so I would say if there seems like some really big pushback, I think we should consider that unless Commissioner Stevens is really adamant about it. I just don't want to inconvenience them in case they couldn't, you know, there's trouble if we haven't talked to them yet and maybe rescheduling or something like that. So I guess I'm kind of holding out my things unless we, I agree with Commissioner Kofalos, I'd like to know with applicants, I hate, you know, they might be taken off work, or maybe we're counting on the timing for loan documents, or I don't know, anything like that. I just want to be thoughtful and sensitive to kind of their planning needs or their schedules as well, so.
I mean, I'm fine either way, obviously, you know. Sometimes people need to leave town, and that's just the way it is, and so I'm not going to change my plans. So if my colleagues want to meet without me, I'm certainly fine with that.
Not knowing the details of these two applications, I'm inclined, and if you're informing them and it won't negatively impact whatever timeframe they're following, I'd be inclined to wait until we're all there.
Well, what I can do is follow up with staff to reach out to the applicants and give them the option, and make them aware that there are only two commissioners available that day, and so if they, if it's an item where they anticipate, you know, a difficult conversation, where there could be kind of a split vote type situation, they, it may be better to wait. If they have some urgency to their application and want it to move forward more quickly, they have that option too. How does that sound? Okay, great. Next, I wanted to give you an update on our county building official hiring process. We did interviews two weeks ago for the replacement for Eric Freed, who's retiring at the end of September, and we had a full day of interviews with a lot of staff and community members involved. We had three final applicants, great participation from some of our community stakeholders, board and commission members, and our staff, not only in community development, but many of our partner departments. Following that day of interviews and after a lot of deep thought on my part, I have decided not to fill that position at this time and hold it vacant for a few months while we work on a transition plan for Eric's retirement, make sure the team is well-supported in that transition, and re-advertise the position later this fall. And so we will be instead shifting our focus to making sure that there's a good division of responsibilities and the team has the level of knowledge and support that they need to accomplish all of those building official duties in the meantime, with my own assistance, of course. So not the outcome that we were hoping for coming out of those interviews, we hoped that there would be someone ready to fill that position, and we're still hopeful that we will find the right person to lead that team in the near future.
Questions or comments?
Okay. All right. Lastly, I have some good news. We last week selected a consultant for the Transfer of Development Rights Program, and as you may recall, we have grant funding from the Department of Local Affairs, so the Strong Communities Grant, to develop a new Transfer of Development Rights Program that can be tested and piloted at a county-wide scale, and we have selected Logan Simpson as the prime consultant. They're based in Fort Collins and have other offices around the west, and they are partnering with Echo Northwest, which is a firm based out of the Pacific Northwest, and a Transfer of Development Rights expert named Skip Swenson. So that team will be a good balance of local knowledge and familiarity with Laramie County and all of our municipalities within the county, and expertise, national expertise on how these TDR programs can be most successful. So we're really excited about the team that we've hired. We're going to move forward with contracting, and just wanted to let you know that good news. Those are all of my updates today.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any comments or questions for Rebecca? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you for sharing the good news, and I'm hoping, if time allows, that I could touch base with you, Rebecca, after the work session. I wanted to have some further clarity on what your expectations are of me regarding the Board of Adjustment meeting tomorrow night, so I'm hoping we could chat about that.
Yes, and the Board of Adjustment meeting tomorrow was canceled because we did not have quorum, but I, we can certainly touch base about the August meeting.
So it's been rescheduled?
It has been, yes, rescheduled for the, we will be having a work session in addition to a regular... to a regular meeting for the Board of Adjustment in August.
Thank you, so maybe we could just touch base briefly.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate that. Leslie, I think you're next.
Yes, so thank you for a thoughtful conversation this morning and great information on the part of the directors from this service area on metrics and how we measure and do the work in the various departments. I think that was helpful, and given that you've seen them all within the day and within the last couple of hours and had that conversation, I don't have a lot of new information to report, but I did want to give a quick update on the work that a team is doing around a water event this fall, an educational event. We've touched on it before, and just to let you know that we are moving forward with our partners at Palmer Land Conservancy and the CSU Water Center and Northern Water and potentially some others coming in to do some events that will wrap around showing the film, having a conversation around the topic about water security in the region, and particularly as it relates to agricultural world and producers, and then hosting those, hosting probably an event in the north and in the south. And so at this point, we're looking for venues and looking for speakers and others who would participate. The likely dates that those will be held are October 13th and November 3rd, and we've spoken with the Agricultural Advisory Board a couple of times now, and they gave some advice in terms of timing and evenings of the week that work best and that sort of thing, and so those dates are based on some of their input, as well as avoiding other conflicting things that might be happening right around that time. Of course, the election is the next day, but those are both Mondays, as requested by the Ag Board. So really, we're looking to advance the water master plan and particularly the educational component of it, and then really giving agricultural producers and then others in the region ideas about resources and things that they might be able to do to potentially avoid some of the transfers that are happening out of the region and understand what options might look like. So that's where we are at this point, but we'll keep you posted as the events get more solidified and as we have a better idea of what they're going to be and who the speakers are going to be. And the idea is to have probably a combined facilitated conversations and then some just open time that people can engage with one another and, you know, understand what resources are available and make connections in the region.
That sounds great. Commissioner O'Shaughnessy, McManley?
Thanks, thanks, Leslie. I know this has been, you've been putting a lot of work into this. Will we be invited, will this be on our calendar, because I don't see it now?
It's probably not there yet, because these dates just got identified within the last week or so, but I can work with Melissa to make sure that there's a hold, save the date, put there. Yeah.
I know how things, just trying to find some openings in October myself. I'm like, what happened here? I also wanted to share with you all, I had my guests from Nick Mole and the Rocky Mountain Channel, who have been up for some Emmys and had won some, several tellies. They did win on Saturday night, the Emmy for Director, and Sean took the Emmy for Photography for the PBS documentary, which was Water, Our Sacred Gift, about Rocky National Park. So I wanted to just share that, because that's pretty amazing, and also I would love to see how we can kind of bring them in to this conversation as well, because obviously, doing fantastic work, and really, they're just, like you said, he's passionate about water and always talking about water, because that's the headwaters for three major rivers, so it'd be great to maybe loop that in. So just want to share, I'm very excited for them, and just pretty outstanding recognition. Thanks.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Commissioner Kofalos?
Thank you. Question regarding the events you just described, Leslie. Will we be showing both the Mirasol film and the film that the, the 12 or 13-minute film that the Northern has put out?
That's a good question. At this point, we're planning to show the Mirasol film. We're not sure about the other one, but that is still a possibility, and it may depend on how the rest of the event gets structured with panelists and speakers and that kind of thing. So Palmer Land Conservancy is really taking the lead on the logistics and really funding this and kind of driving ahead, but we've got the team, as mentioned, from other organizations too, that are providing some input around it. So right now, NISA is off crafting ideas and looking for venues, and then we'll know more in a few weeks.
It just seems that if one of our themes is water security, that the Northern film is attempting to specifically address that in terms of exporting of water from northern Colorado.
Yes. Thank you for that input, and I'll be sure to share it back too.
Good. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else. That's it for today.
Well, we'll look forward to those events in the fall, and thank you for bringing those forward, and yeah, that'll be good. The Northern film is fairly short, so it wouldn't be probably too rough if it was shown on the same evening, and, you know, people could probably handle both, but, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
To be decided. Thank you. All right, well, that is all we have coming before us this afternoon. So at 2:09, we're adjourned. Thank you.